Ready team?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order today, Monday, May 6th. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. We'll now move right into student spotlights, which I understand Betsy is going to come and share some fun happenings in our buildings with us.
Pardon? What? We're doing that under students spotlight? It's on the agenda there.
Good evening. Well, tonight, we're going to start our school spotlight at Freedom Elementary School. Our teacher, Gail Varner, shared a few fun new learning experiences her students have had this year. Freedom's students have been engaged in exploring new mediums and skills in their art and developing new skills in their art class. They've also been learning about famous artists, art vocabulary, and how to apply the elements of design. Sixth grade students created pop art gym shoes using candy as their inspiration. They're finishing up the year with the study of neurographic art and creating an explosion book, which you'll see in the video collage. Fifth graders have learned a lot, have spent a lot of time learning how to use shade using colored pencils. They applied this new skill to draw and shade a dragon eye. They're finishing up the year using their fine motor skills as they learn about weaving. Fourth graders have been studying famous artists all year. They create a vanguard sunflowers and are currently working on Claude Monet water lilies. Along the way, they painted a circle loom and learned to weave with yarn. Finally, Freedom's third grade students have been focusing on the elements of design. They started the year learning about line, shape, and color. While studying color, they created a rainbow pop-up book. Recently, they studied Henri Rousseau and his fantastical paintings of tropical rainforest. They finished up the year painting a jungle tiger representing his painting entitled, "Surprised." Art teacher Amy Panfalon believes that it's important for students to learn about issues facing their communities, to have empathy for others, and to find ways to be a part of the solution. Like many clubs at Ridge Junior School, the art club has been able to help with several community initiatives. For the last seven years, Ridge art students have participated in the Save Local Water Cincinnati Zoo Rain Barrel Project. Forty local artists are chosen to paint rain barrels that are auctioned to the public to raise money for water conservation and educational programs. This year, Ridge had three barrels chosen. The art club worked collaboratively on one barrel, and we also have two individual artists whose designs were selected. Congratulations, Annabelle Ruiz and Anna Leach. The three barrels together were part of the fundraising auction that raised over $12,000 for this worthy cause. The art club also participated in canned creations to support Reach Out Lakota and brought home the Best in Show trophy. They constructed their giant Stanley tumbler from over 300 canned food items donated by Ridge families and staff, as well as a very generous donation by a local company. In true We Are Lakota spirit, they called in the help of Ridge's design and modeling teacher for some last-minute support of their tumbler. These junior school students also had a hand in making the Lakota West Prom theme come to life this year. Along with a few other Westside schools, Ridge's art club was asked to create art for this year's prom, with the theme being Met Gala. The art club worked on the reproductions of pieces that might be seen in the New York Metropolitan Museum of Art. Touching on the We Are Lakota collaboration again, Big Cubs, Little Cubs was an opportunity for Lakota Central High School students to mentor Creekside early childhood students. Central students applied in January and met with their Creekside friend twice a month from February through April. They encouraged a positive growth mindset, promoted the power of play, emphasized ways to be kind, and how to manage big emotions. All of this was on top of friendships and connections to the larger community of Lakota students. The impact was powerful, and the Central Big Cubs, it was powerful on the Central Big Cubs, as they bonded as a group, learned how to be a leader and a role model, and connected with young students. Central's principal, Kate Joseph, shared, "We were grateful for this opportunity to build into Creekside and humbled at how much we learned about ourselves. It was wonderful to be able to make We Are Lakota more than just our school." Creekside's principal, Todd Hartman, has been pleased with this new program as well. He shared, "It's been an amazing partnership between the kids at Central and Creekside. I'm very grateful for counselors Jen Russell and Audrey Young for all they did to make it possible." Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. All right, now, if you would join us, Isaac, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For board president's comments, I'd like to thank everyone for being here, and I would like to invite Dr. Ashley Whitley to come to the stage and join us. If you may have read, hopefully you've read and seen, we had a very busy week last week where we did our finalist interviews and had various members of our community come in and help us, and we are thrilled that we were able to meet on Saturday and appoint Dr. Whitley as our new superintendent. So, welcome, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. As the newly appointed superintendent of Lakota local schools, I am honored to stand before you, eager to forge meaningful connections and embark on a journey of collaboration and growth together. With a deep-rooted commitment to educational excellence and a fervent belief in the power of positive culture and community engagement, I am thrilled to begin this dialogue with all stakeholders. We all share in the mission of nurturing the minds and spirits of our students and staff, fostering a culture of innovation, inclusivity, and empowerment within our schools and beyond. Together, we will shape a brighter future for all students and leave an indelible mark on the landscape of education in our Lakota community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and now we'll move on to Dr. Lally on superintendent's comments with our current superintendent.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome Dr. Whitley. I'm looking forward to a smooth transition as I ease out into retirement. Not full retirement, but retirement of some sort. And I'd also like to, you know, we're celebrating lots of things this month. As we finish the school year, we're celebrating a variety of things besides hiring a new superintendent, which is a celebration for Lakota, the proms, graduations, field days, all the special academic achievement and award ceremonies. Those are all occurring in this month, in the next couple of weeks, because school is out in two weeks and four days, I believe it is. So, we are coming in on the end. And next week, we have graduation for Central, for West, and for East, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, in that order. And then, we also have on Friday our Last Breakfast of Excellence, which honors staff members who've gone above and beyond and have been nominated by their peers and their principals. So, we'll be honoring them on Friday morning. And then, we're also celebrating the Teachers of Excellence, the Educator Excellence Awards this week. One has already been surprised this morning, and then we have a couple more surprises the rest of this week, so those will be fun to celebrate. And then, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Zink and his team for their audit report and for doing such a great job and being recognized. So, it's a real honor and a privilege to work with a treasurer who understands finance and works with you instead of against you as you're trying to change the landscape for education, and that's who Adam Zink is. So, I just want to congratulate you and say that publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zink?
I just want to say congratulations also to Dr. Whitley. We've had several meetings in a row again this year, so hopefully we can stop seeing so much of each other, as much as I enjoy our time together. But I want to thank all the candidates that put in. There was a lot of interest shown this time around, and look forward to the future. So, that's all I have at this time, and now we will do a little presentation.
Fabulous.
Finally, since we've gotten so much mileage out of this.
Seriously. It's going to be next year before you finish.
So, we wanted to take a moment to recognize the Treasurer's Office staff for all of the hard work that goes into this every day. We've gotten our 10th Auditor of State Award with Distinction, which is a lot of work. It's our everyday work that goes into this, and this is just the award at the end. I know we've talked about this probably about 15 meetings now to finally get to this point. The representative from the Auditor of State's office has a sick spouse at home and is not able to make it tonight, so he did do a custom video for us that I've put into the presentation. So, the Treasurer's Office is basically made up of five main components. We have benefits, payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and then we also have the Welcome Center. Welcome Center is where we enroll all of our students, and we also submit student-staff data to the Department of Education and Workforce now, used to be ODE. So, from the Benefits Department, we have Honey Thompson is not able to make it tonight. We also have Kelly Harrington. So, benefits for Lakota, we have 2,700 staff on medical and dental benefits. That is 7,200 employees and dependents, so total people on the plans. And last year, in fiscal year '23, all the information's about fiscal year '23, there was just under 10,000 actions managed by the Benefits Department. Next, we have the Payroll Department. Lisa Beederman is also ill tonight, so she isn't able to make it. Brianne Miller, Jackie Lukin. We didn't have anybody tonight from the Payroll Department show up. Kelly was in the Payroll Department. So, for us, we have 2,500 W-2s for calendar year '23. We had 365 new hires and 350 terminations. Terminations become a big deal because that's where we have to calculate final pays and all that fun stuff. Next, we have the Welcome Center. We have Pam Ziegler, Nicole Berkeley, Rizel Reyes, Kimberly Toback, Luis Rodriguez, Stephanie Serrato, and Candace Rogers. So, in the Welcome Center last year, we had 4,800 enrollments and withdrawals total, 725 address changes, 28 EMS submissions, sorry, I lost the word, 28 EMS submissions, and that submitted just over 2 million data points to the Department of Education. So, it's quite a bit. And the biggest thing that we're proud of is all students got enrolled last year for the first day of school. That was a goal that we had all set, to make sure that we would make it.
That's awesome.
And so, that is something that now we intend to continue doing. Next, we have accounts payable. We have Lucas Myers, Lisa Duckworth, and Jenny Shepherd is not able to make it tonight. On the accounts payable side, there was 19,000 requisitions went through for Lakota School District, 10,500 payments, and overall expenditures was just over $236 million. And then, on accounts receivable, Lucas is also over accounts receivable. We also have Beth Mashad. We had 70,000 virtual transactions. This is made up of cafeteria, our ticket sales are, whether it be for the plays or sporting events. We had 7,500 receipts and 237 million received. And then, finally, we have Assistant Treasurer, Darian Oskley. Darian's the brains behind the operation. He keeps the show moving while I'm doing everything else. Other duties is assigned, Hannah Davis, formerly known as Hannah Songer, and Jennifer David. She is our generalist. She has been a position that the board allowed us to put in when we did a little bit of restructuring. She kind of backfills and covers for people while they're on breaks, and that's helped a lot of cross-training and helped everybody to move on. And then, myself. Now, for the Auditor of State's video.
Good evening. On behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, it is my honor to present Lakota Local School District the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for fiscal year 2023. This award puts the Lakota Local School District in a very select group. Auditor of State Keith Faber's office audits approximately 6,000 entities and less than 5% are even eligible for this award. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the following criteria of a clean audit report. The entity must file financial reports with the Auditor of State's office by the statutory due date without extension on an accounting basis and prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. The audit report does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, uniform guidance findings, or questioned costs. The entity's management letter contains no comments related to ethics referrals, questions costs, or less than the threshold for the uniform guidance, lack of timely annual financial report submission, bank reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with uniform guidance, findings for recovery less than $500, public meetings or public records issues, and the entity has no other financial or other concerns. This award represents the hard work of all school district employees and Treasurer's Office staff who make every effort each day to attain accounting excellence. I want to recognize the Board of Education members who have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar at Lakota Local School District. I specifically want to recognize your treasurer, Adam Zink, for his leadership, professionalism, and exceptional commitment to fiscal integrity. Congratulations, Adam. On behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, I would like to present Lakota Local School District with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for fiscal year 2023. Congratulations.
And now, if the board will come up, we'll get a picture.
What was that? Oh, okay. Sounds like... Get your badge on. You've got to keep blind, just a second.
Everybody move to the screen. And you're not being asked. 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 One, two, three, take it off. One, two, three, come on.
Don't make it go home. Once again, I think as stated in the video, when they say that this award is only received by less than 5% of all public entities, I don't know that we fully appreciate here, given that this has been 10 years in a row. How amazing. If you compound that by less than 5% a year and then 10 years in a row, this is incredible work that the entire department has done, so thank you so much.
Thank you. It's just what we expect.
All right. With that, we'll move to the Board Policy Committee for first reads. Mr. V is going to come up and tell us what we've done.
Yes. Excuse me. Lakota Policy Committee met this past Friday, May 3rd. As a result of that meeting, we are bringing forward the following policies for first read tonight. First one in numerical order, 1432 Sick Leave. This is a revision. This is our administrative sick leave, which is very similar to what you would see in our policy 3432 and 4432 with a couple of additions that we put on there. Our administrative employees do not have a union contract, so we want to make sure we capture some of the same language for our administrative staff. The first paragraph is identical to what you would see, as I mentioned, in policy 3432 and 4432. And the last section mentions that we will adopt a new administrative guideline that mirrors the contract language for, similar to what we do for our LEA and LSSA employees with sick leave bank. So, that will be generated once you approve on the second read. 2210 Curriculum Development. We're just updating our language. It reinforces the use of board-approved courses of study and curricular materials, and also updating the ODE reference to the newly created due. Just a reminder that supplemental materials, we ask that those would fall in line with those adopted courses of study. And I believe Mrs. Brown tomorrow, in part of our PD session in the morning, will be explaining the courses of study adoption a little further for our staff. 2220 Adoption of Courses of Study. Like 2210, it's updating language to ensure each course has an adopted course of study and updated ODE references as well to the newly created due. 2240 Controversial Issues. Added language is to reinforce the need for neutrality when discussing controversial issues in the classroom, given that also this is a presidential election year coming up. Then, 2510 Adoption of Textbooks. Updating language to reflect the adoption of digital materials and resources, since most companies offer more than just a physical textbook, that there is a digital copy, so we want to make sure we included that. So, those are the first reads that are before you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? No? Thank you, Rob. We look forward to finishing those next meeting.
And we will have a second. We will adopt the policies from the last meeting under Board Action.
For Butler Tech, I actually, we haven't had a board meeting, but I did warn Dr. Lally of this ahead of time. They had the all-boards meeting, and so I was hoping she could speak to that. The rest of us, unfortunately, were otherwise occupied in our interview process, so we were not able to attend.
As in the past, from what I've heard, it was an outstanding evening. There were student displays and student conversations. I spent a great deal of time in the entrepreneurial part of the displays and the exhibits and talked to several students, and it's just amazing what our students know, understand, and are able to do, what thoughts and ideas that they come up with. And then, I know that this will be a favorite of a couple of the board members. The food tent was just outstanding. The culinary department at Butler Tech just continues to do great work, so it was outstanding. I also attended some of the fine arts exhibits, some of the artwork that was displayed in some of the hallways that were there, with students actually presenting about their ideas and the work that was there, and it was an excellent meeting, an excellent event, although it was extremely hot in the tent that night, but inside, it was a wonderful opportunity to see students and all that they can do at Butler Tech and all that they have done at Butler Tech. So, I'm glad I was able to attend.
Great. I know Butler Tech has sent out all of their acceptance letters, and some people have accepted, rejected. I know there's a second round of opportunities right now for a couple of the programs, so if anybody is still interested, predominantly in the School of the Arts and then a couple of senior-only programs, people can take a look at. Community engagement?
We ended up not having community engagement. There was nothing on the agenda, so we canceled it.
Sorry. Finance committee? I'll start. We had our finance committee meeting with Adam. We reviewed the five-year forecasts and all of the assumptions, and we will actually present that to the entire board at the next meeting, so I won't plan on going into a lot of detail, Isaac, anything.
We had planned on bringing the forecast forward tonight, but with all of the busy we had last week, and I wasn't really able to get as much time on the presentation as I would like, and we had some late changes to the assumptions that we need to just analyze a little bit so we can get as accurate as possible, so that will be coming forward on May 20th.
Great. Board Professional Development? Anyone want to speak to that? Several of us went up to the legislative conference up in Columbus, and it was an excellent presentation, it always is. They bring different representatives in. The governor spoke, always impressed with how passionate he is about education, and we had, they were fast and furious with all the bills that were coming through. So, anyone else want to add anything on that?
It just seemed like it was very quick. It was a very quick, they could maybe stretch it, add a little hour to it, because it was so much information in a short period of time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry. There is a, as usual, there's a ton of activity as far as potential House bills impacting education, so it was really nice to get different perspectives there. I really appreciated the governor sharing his words, especially so quickly after the State of the State address, where he addressed a lot of educational needs there. So, it was a very, very useful day, and also really appreciated our state senator, George Lang, meeting us for lunch so we could talk issues with him as well. It's important for us to be able to have that access in that forum.
Yep. Was a bit of a debate between a couple of the representatives up front during the meeting.
During one of the panels, yes.
They had different opinions.
Got a little heated at one point.
It's always nice to see what both sides think of topics.
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right. Meeting dates and times are posted online, as well as, there was a printout out front if anyone would like to take a look at any of those, and then we'll move on to the Special Education Report.
I'd like to ask that Andrea Longworth come forward to give the report on special education and other information about some changes for next school year. So, Ms. Longworth?
Good evening. I'm excited to speak with you tonight about Lakota Special Services and the wide range of programs and supports that are implemented to meet the diverse needs of our students with disabilities. In our K-12 grades, we provide direct services to approximately 1,658 students with disabilities and an additional 231 preschoolers with identified disabilities, making a total of 1,889 students. It is important to note that Lakota's responsibility to students extends beyond those attending our physical school buildings. We must evaluate and identify any students suspected of having an educational disability, regardless of their school attendance. This includes homeschooled, community school, parochial school students who reside in Lakota. When considering all students with disabilities residing within Lakota school boundaries, this number increases to 2,170. We provide instructional services to approximately 1,889 students from preschool through grade 12. This translates to 1,889 individualized educational programs, or IEPs. These are implemented every single day across our 23 buildings. Notice I emphasize the word "program." This is because a child with special needs requires specialized instruction, as well as supplementary support throughout their school day, not just when they're working with specialized, special education staff. This is why it's so important to remember that these are all of our students and that students with disabilities are general education students first. In fact, approximately 70% of our students with disability spend at least 80% of their school day in a general education classroom. Achieving this level of inclusion involves individualized accommodations and modifications outlined in each student's educational programming. Our dedicated staff, both general education and special education, collaborate to implement specialized programming that fosters student success and well-being across all educational As we delve into our special education staff, I want to highlight the dedication, care, and expertise that is demonstrated daily to meet our students' needs. We currently have 133 intervention specialists, 90 related service personnel who provide direct specialized instruction, assessment, and consultation, as well as 180 support staff who work in conjunction with intervention specialists and general education teachers to ensure student success, students' access to accommodations, modification, safety measures, as well as behavioral and academic supports. Additionally, 621 students with disabilities qualify for special transportation. Our transportation services consider each student's needs for accommodations and modifications as outlined in their IEP. Students are transported to many locations within the district and outside the district. Collectively, these individuals make Lakota's special education program exemplary. This could not be accomplished without each and every staff member working together with the same purpose, to provide each and every individual student with the best possible While there hasn't been a significant increase in the total number of students with disability in the last few years, there has been a noteworthy shift in specific disability categories, which has directly impacted the staffing of intervention specialists and instructional assistants. For instance, Lakota has responded to a significant increase in students on the autism spectrum. In fact, Lakota's current total in this category is 4% higher than the state's average. We have increased by 90 more students in this category over the last few years, mostly in grades pre-K3. In response to this increase in specific disability categories, we have continued to develop... to develop specialized classrooms to meet the needs of some of our most complex learners. Our special services team has bolstered programming for students who are served in these specialized classrooms, which heavily focuses on communication, adaptive skills, behavioral supports, and academic rigor. In addition to Lakota's internal resources, we provide summer training opportunities for teachers of specialized classrooms. We partner with experts outside the district in areas such as student behavior and communication to ensure we are meeting the needs of all learners. Lakota currently has 24 specialized classrooms across the district, and we will be adding five more next year. Sorry. Due to, in the K-6, due, due to the number of students who require these specially, these, these highly specialized classrooms. The ratio for these classrooms is one teacher for two instructional aides, and two instructional aides for every six to eight students, depending on the specifics of the classroom. As I referenced earlier, the impact can be seen in the area of staffing, but this also has implications for special transportation and classroom space, as we know is already limited in our K-6 buildings. Our goal in special education is to provide meaningful educational experiences and equitable access to curriculum that leads to academic and post-secondary success. Starting at age 14, each individualized education program has post-secondary goals designed to fit the unique needs of each student, preparing them for further education, employment, and independent living. We accomplish this not by utilize, not just by utilizing the resources in our school, but also partnerships and collaboration with families, our community, local businesses, and state and local resources. This year, we were able to establish a PAYS Labs in each of our high school. A PAYS Lab, or Practical Assessment Exploration System, is a pre-vocational program designed to offer career exploration and assessment of a potential, of employment potential. The PAYS Lab provides an opportunity to develop job skills related to post-secondary goals by providing a profile of job performance and workplace skills that generalize to the expectations of a variety of employment options. Students explore jobs in five areas: consumer service, business, processing, construction, and computer technology, to, to determine their interests and abilities. Lakota has a longstanding and amazing transition-to-work program. High school students who qualify for work-study as related service receive valuable real-world experience as they spend time each day working at the jo, at a job. Either in school or out in the community, these work sites aim to develop job skills and positive work habits that will translate to employment once a student leaves Lakota. Currently, we have 60 students that spend time each day at these job sites. In the past two years, 128 students have participated in this program, many of whose community placements have resulted in permanent jobs. We are thankful for these partnerships with businesses and communities. There are also paid job opportunities within our school buildings and at Central Office. If you're ever at Central Office, please stop by Special Services where you will most likely see two to three students working alongside a job coach in Special Services. They're doing essential jobs like filing, gathering, and delivery of mail, making copies, or organizing special projects for the communications department. We would truly be lost without their skill set, and for me personally, the students bring me a constant reminder of why we are here, and it is for them, each individual Each December, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce issues a rating on the performance of special education programs for each school, district, and community school in the state. This is known as the Special Education Annual Rating and meets federal requirements for local education agencies that receive IDA funding. The rating reflects the implementation of these federal requirements, also called compliance measures, and results for students with disabilities. A district can receive one of the following ratings: meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, needs substantial intervention. The 2023 rating uses data from the 2122 school year to create the district's rating. Lakota's rating reflects that we met all requirements, receiving 27 out of 28 points. We will receive our next rating in December of 2024, which will be based on the 2223 data. However, there will be two new student indicators: graduation rate for students with disability and dropout rate for students with disability. We feel confident that we will meet these indicators, as the graduation target is 62% for students with disability, and Lakota is at 87% for students with disability. And the dropout rate target is 16% for students with disability, and Lakota is at 4%. We are committed to, we are committed to continued improvement of all indicators, especially the dropout rate, which we would like to see at zero. Our graduation rate is at 87%, primarily due to students who defer their diploma based on their post-secondary goals on the IEP. Traditionally, these students who require pre-employability skills transition, transition to work skills, communication, or functional life skills beyond those four years of trad, of traditional high school. And once a student defers their diploma, unfortunately, they count as a non-graduate. I'd also like to highlight that that meets requirement result, results are truly a product of 365 days of calendar work. Federal and state laws do not allow for timelines to stop due to holidays, summer breaks, or mother nature events. The rating is a collective effort of district-wide systems, checks and balances, the dedication of the special services team, special education staff, the data accountability support staff of special services, the EMIS team in Mr. Zink's office, the infrastructure from our chief technology officer, Mr. Wesley's team. It truly takes all systems working together to make this happen. I would like to take a moment to review the two departments at Central Office. The first is Special Services, which is everything that I just reviewed, and that's everything IDA-related in special education. The other is Pupil Services, and you can see some of those areas that are currently there, and those are just large buckets of work, and does not reflect everything that is currently within the pupil services, but is mainly the, the big buckets of work that are there right now. Starting next year, we will consolidate these departments into one pupil services department. I see this as an opportunity to expand the team, to include a wider range of support services for students, families, and school staff. This team will encompass special education, gifted education, healthcare services, counseling, and student wellness supports, as well as some federally mandated programs. These services aim to enhance student well-being, academic success, and overall educational experience, and I am thrilled to expand the team to include these professionals. In closing, recently I've been asked by other educational professionals, many of whom have had as many years in the field as I do. Why do I continue to be a special education director? Because the burnout rate of these jobs is extremely high, and I always say without hesitation, simply because I love it. And I really mean that. I really do have the best job. A career in education is hard. This job can be incredibly difficult, sometimes heartbreaking, sometimes frustrating. I get to take the time to do what not all executive team members get to do. I get to take the time and talk with the special services team about students each and every day. I collaborate, I problem-solve around real students with complex needs, and at the center of each and every one of these conversations is one singular student. I am grateful that I am leading the district in individualized educational programming, and I am grateful that next year I'm expanding the department. And having said that, I would just like to quickly thank my team of problem solvers and collaborate, collaborate, the people I collaborate with, sorry, I can't say it, Ms. Jackie Cruz, Sherry Copeland, Sarah Tiberzzi, Mark Clevins, and Brian Drake. And I would like to also thank you for your leadership, Dr. Lally, your continued leadership, Mr. Zink, as always, your support for everything you do, President Schaefer, Vice President Casper, and the rest of the board, and of course, I'd like to welcome Dr. Whitley to Lakota. Okay. Questions?
Who would like to start?
So I, I'll start. I have numerous questions, so thank you for indulging me. I noticed the, I think it was 35% increase in autism services. How has that impacted our approach to delivering services?
Well, that's where a lot of our expansion is, in our specialized units. I mean, we really, when you look at that number, there's a full continuum within that. So we're really looking at our communication, we're looking at our specialized classrooms, we're really looking at our supports with, that are built in within, but that's really where it's impacted our specialized units the most. I mean, it was 12 years ago that we built our first specialized unit, and now we are up to, you know, 24 this year, and we're, we're adding on another five next year. So that's really where it's hit us the most.
Thank you. And then, how should I interpret the, the negative, or the decline of 20% in speech services? Is there any perspective on that change that seems pretty dramatic?
I think that we're doing a, a better job of probably identifying in other areas, in educating parents in other areas, instead of just saying a child has a speech and language disability primary. And I think we, that we used to do that a lot. I believe that we are also identifying earlier other disabilities, where we used to identify first as a speech and language disability, and then another disability later.
Great.
Thank you. And with the new model that you, you laid out there, and I'm just reacting to the org chart, so I know there's a lot more behind it, but should I interpret that as being much more of a grade-level approach of all of the services? I guess I was trying, I was trying to understand how I should think specifically around the services that were under pupil services. Now, within this new, new organization, will people be responsible, so like the, I think it was nine through 12, Director of Special Services, will they be responsible for pupil services as well, or how should I think about that?
So special education will stay special education, because they are specialists in that area. And then we will be looking at the pupil service piece, the student service piece will be student services. So we will stay specialist in our area, but there will be definitely some crossover. I, I look at it as, we already work together. It's more of, you know, really looking at the sharing of resources in a different way, but we already all work together.
Okay. Thank you.
Mine is just comment, not a. I want to thank you for your dedication and your patience to run this program. I'm happy to hear that no child is left behind. As you run these programs, I know how difficult it is to manage kids, how much more special new kids. So mine is to thank you for what you do, and to encourage you to continue to be patient and give all our kids the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions and a comment. I'll start with a comment. We have focused so much over the last few years on personalized learning, and I have always felt, and I commend you for, if, if everyone took a deeper look at special education and how you personalize plans for students, all of our students could grow from a personalized learning standpoint. So I really enjoyed your presentation tonight. I do have a couple of questions, and a couple of them are actually a follow-up to Doug's questions. Can you talk a little bit about the professional development that you have offered to our staff or that they have taken part in to really learn a little bit more about autism and how to best support our students?
We have a lot of modules that we've used from professional organizations, and we really have honed in on a lot of our support staff who are with our students a large part of the time. We've done a lot of training here recently, even with transportation, within the realm of autism spectrum disorder, to make sure that we are preparing even our, people who are with our students on the buses. So we really heavily rely on our technology, our modules, to cater towards a variety of people. We also have a lot of opportunities to have modules that are given to our intervention specialists, because there's such a wide range on that autism spectrum, to make sure that we are given options. So if I'm an intervention specialist, I can go through a menu of PD, and I can choose which things are appropriate for either me as the intervention specialist or my support staff to, to take those trainings. So Ocali's one of them, IRS is another that we utilize for that.
Thank you. And then the combination of departments. So that was the first time that I saw the org chart, so I was trying to process quickly. Is that taking over the entire department of pupil services, or is that shared between different places? Or can you talk a little bit about how those decisions were made as far as what falls where and why?
It is taking over currently most of pupil services. There are some pieces that will be going to curriculum and some pieces that are be coming over into one pupil services department.
Okay.
I might be able to further address that. We, we started talking about some of that in January, and making sure that we had all of our student services together, so that we can impact by coordinating more and making sure that we had all the focus on students in that one area, instead of it kind of split in, into sections. And then anything that's related to the curriculum side, excuse me, for example, ESL, federal programs, Title I services, that will all go to the curriculum side because that's instructional-based. So we're trying to, to manage that in those two ways. One is about the student and their services, the other is about the curriculum piece.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then my last question is about the new requirements that are coming for next year. So you had mentioned that the graduation rate was 87% and mostly because of deferred graduation. Do you have any idea, and this might be a get-back-to-me question, which is completely fine also, do you have any idea what that percentage looks like minus the deferred option?
I don't off the top of my head, but that is something I can get back to you.
That would be great. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Again, yes, thank, echoing everybody, thank you for your presentation, and I will, I will ask again, because I'm old, if we could have these loaded before the meeting, because I can't see any of the statistics on the screen when they're so small. So if we could have those loaded, that would, helpful to someone who's old, that would be me. But I have a couple of questions. So is the, we're all very confused about the pupil services part. Is this Wyatt's position that's now going to be, Andrea's going to have that, and special ed, is that how I'm understanding, except for what you put in correct?
That's correct, because she was, that position was cut before I got here, and because there were so many loose ends and kind of people without a home, basically, we put in the interim position, and then as we reorganized and restructured, we moved those other things to either curriculum or to Andrea, and so.
So we're not posting that? That's not, because we talked about that at one point.
Not posting it, no.
Okay. So, okay.
That position goes away, essentially.
Okay.
And, and that position had gone away before I got here, but because there was kind of some disarray around it, we did that to stabilize and then to figure out where we needed to go with that this year.
You said you're adding five new classrooms next year, and I know that staffing is always hard, and I know that, like you said, it's burnout and we lose a lot of staff. Are we staff, fully staffed for next year, or how, how, how are you doing on that?
At, as of today, we're looking really good. I mean, we started early, hire often, so no, we're, we're looking really good right now.
Yes. And are those five classrooms, or is it being added just throughout the district in different buildings?
Where, where we, yes, we're trying to put them where the, number one, where it makes sense, and number two, where there's space.
Right. Yeah, that's a problem, as we know. Yeah, that's a problem, as we know. Do we know if there's any movement in the legislature? And this is actually to anybody who would know the answer to that. Well, they've talked about taking away that, not having, not having it when they go on to their extended, extended education after 12th grade. They've talked about not having that count against us. Not, is there any movement on that?
The last thing that I heard was that it was still in deliberation. They're still talking about that. But I had not heard that they've made a decision about it, or anything has passed about it. Ms. Longworth, have you heard anything?
I've not heard anything.
Yeah. The last I heard, it was still being talked about.
It's very frustrating that we get dinged for doing what's best for kids. And that makes me insane. But yeah, that it's what they consider a black mark on our graduation rate. That's all. Thank you again, Andrea.
Thank you.
Again, Christina asked about the professional development that was happening. And I know there's some questions about what our teachers get versus our support staff and special education get. Are we confident that our entire spectrum of people who are providing services are all well-trained on the IEPs, on what's needed to implement those IEPs, and safety measures and such?
I am confident that our intervention specialists have plenty of time and plenty of training, and a complete role of their job and what they are supposed to do to meet with any teacher who is, plays any role in a student's IEP. And then they're supposed to meet with the teacher, go over the IEP, have a full staffing. So I'm very confident that a case manager is equipped to meet with the particular teachers who play a role in a child's IEP, to have those conversations.
What about the instructional aids and that level of?
And instructional aids. That is the role of the case manager. That is why they have ratios that they have, because it's so important that they fully understand every part of that IEP. And then they are case managing and meeting with the teaching, the gen ed teaching staff and the support staff.
Okay. And I know, I think for parents, like, I think those in the special ed department are so well-versed, that it sometimes gets a little confusing for parents, differences between what is a 504 and what is an IEP. So can you help just give a brief description? And also, how do we break down those barriers for families internally?
So give a really high-level explanation, if that's okay. So in order to qualify for an IEP, you have to meet one of the 13 categories under IDEA, so Individuals with Disabilities Act. And in order to be on a 504, that's ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. And you have to have one of those qualifying factors. They're very separate. One's about access, and one is about meeting those qualifying factors. And IDEA is about specially-designed instruction. And 504s is about, is about access to school.
So as a parent, how do I navigate that if I just know my child's having some trouble, and I think they need some supports?
Contact your building principal.
Okay.
Start there.
And they'll be able to help direct me as to what to do next? And then aren't there, don't we have certain testing requirements or evaluation requirements that we will provide for families?
Contact your building principal. Start there.
Okay. So beyond the building principal, like, is there, we also have, I know a support group now, that's kind of like, I call them kind of the PTO for our students with special needs, to help provide parental support. Do we partner with them at different points? And how does that all work?
So Locota Cares is who you're referring to. They are a support group for parents. And they are, I do meet with them on a regular basis. And they are part of, it is a partnership. And they do support a lot of the things that we do, and there's a lot of communication. Our parent mentor is the designee for Locota Special Services. And there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth. Just recently, Locota Cares, I'm kind of looking this direction, because I know they're sitting out here, Locota Cares donated some, a beautiful bouquet of flowers to our Transition to Work Program. So there's definitely a partnership between special services and Locota Cares. They just sent the, I'm trying to think what it was, the social for the ice cream that's coming up here shortly. So that will be pushed out through our parent mentor's website as, or website as well. And then we try to meet as frequently as, I think it's quarterly, with the, I'm trying to think of the right word. Because they changed, we just changed things up to where there was someone who was designated from Locota Cares, that besides our parent mentor, that was meeting with me on a regular basis. But we're going to switch that up, so it's not the same person.
And you mentioned the parent mentor, again, for the, for the greater good. Can you share what that, what the role of a parent mentor is?
So a parent mentor in Locota is someone who can work with families to really walk them through the process of identification. And that doesn't matter if it's a 504 or an IEP. But really walk them through the process of identification from start to finish. And once they're identified, can really help them navigate any part of the system. And then once they're identified, a student's identified, could really help them through adult services, and through that transition at any part in time.
Okay. So that would be another area for our families, as they're navigating, for them to work in that area?
Special Services has a webpage. I mean, there's lots of resources on our website. Our parent mentor has a webpage. There's lots of resources there.
Perfect. All right.
Yeah, can I? Yeah, while we were discussing this, this question came to my mind, and I wanted to share, and see if you have the answer. What are the challenges you have now, or you're anticipating, that you think might affect the success of the graduations of these kids, that you also want the board to know?
The graduation of the kids?
So what challenges do you think, do you have now, or you are anticipating, that will affect the graduation of the kids? The special need kids?
I mean, are, I don't know that there are challenges. I think there's barriers for all students. And I think Locota really does a great job of ensuring that we remove those barriers, and that our students are getting everything that they need. I don't know that, I mean, we can always do better. There's nothing, you'll never hear me ever say the words that we're doing everything. We can always do better. I mean, if you're going to give me a checkbook and tell me, here, go do, what else do you want?
Yeah.
I'll do, I'll do that. So there's, there's always more that we could be doing. I mean, absolutely. There's, there's always more.
Okay. This is what prompted the question. If I had you write, the graduation rate is 85%, correct?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven percent. Okay. So how do we raise that number? Because I expected there are barriers. How do we raise that to get it to 100%?
Well, I just want to clarify, the 87% and what we have to figure out is, is it 87% because our students with more profound disabilities? They, our students can stay until their 21st birthday. And once they are here for more than four years, they're considered a non-graduate. So I'm not sure how many those students are staying more than four years are in that number. And I'll get that for you. But I believe that it's a pretty significant number of students. When you hear me say the number of specialized units, I won't make the assumption that all of those students are hitting some of those numbers. But I will say, most of those students, plus some other students, are definitely eligible for that deferment.
Thank you for highlighting that. That's what I was asking. Appreciate it.
But I agree, 100% is
Thank you.
what we want.
And we partner with Butler Tech on some of those programs, where they can go on to the next level and continue their services. So that's been a very popular program.
It's great for kids. It's what's best for students. State just doesn't like it.
Any other?
Andrea, I would love some context. So I just made an assumption, and I'd love for you to check my assumption on that. You know, when I look at the numbers, and I saw 280 students fall within, you know, they're not attending Locota schools, their parochial, their homeschool. That's roughly like 13, 14% from a head count. Is that representative of how I should think about that from a services received? Is there any nuances? And I don't need exact figures, but just like, is that a rough, like, of the services that we're providing to that contingent? Or is there any reason that that, the services would be greater or lesser to that, to that group, that population?
Those are just students that we are not, that we don't provide services for, that we just identify because they reside within Locota. They may be students that we have to write an IEP for, because they're, they are, we're providing a scholarship for them, but they're just students that we have to identify.
Okay.
Because they reside within Locota. But we may not be providing anything for, we're not providing any service for.
We're not outside of potential IEP creations. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the help.
All right. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move to the second read of board policies. I'm not sure, is Mr. Vogelmann?
No. He doesn't usually read them again.
All right. So since we reviewed all of these last time, do I have a motion to approve board policies as presented at our last meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the board minutes. Do I have a motion to approve board minutes? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's several in there.
Yes. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We now have superintendent's recommendations, approval of personnel items, approval of field trips, and approval of donations. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Question. Field trip, where's the field trip going to?
Um, the field trip is for the UJ leadership conference and the National Leadership Conference between Texas. I believe that there's people that are in the classroom, they're Dr. students, they're on their own, and apply there, problem, and it's a conference here. Networking, if there's a lot of networking in healthcare professionals, so it's a, it's more of an interest in that.
Thank you.
And I believe they had to even qualify to get to this level to attend.
It's part of our outstanding HOSA program that we have at Locota East.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right. Now we move to closing comments, and I'll start with Christina today.
First, I want to welcome Dr. Whitley. We're very excited to have you. I know it was a long process, but we're glad that it ended with you, and we're looking forward to our partnership in the future. I also wanted to say congratulations to the Treasurers' Office. I know there's countless hours and work, and checking the check, and check, and checking again, all the things. So congratulations to you, Adam, and your team.
Thank you.
That's, that's excellent. 10 years in a row is really something to be proud of. I also wanted to say that I really enjoyed the special education presentation today. And I want to thank your entire team for being here, and for sharing that information with us. The more we know, the better we can grow together. So I really appreciate that, and the work that you're doing with our special need students, as they're such an important part of our community and our growth as a district. And finally, I'm looking forward to all of the fabulous events over the next couple of weeks. We have so many exciting things that are getting ready to take place. And all of them are celebrations of our students and our educators. So that makes it even more exciting.
Mr. Horton?
So I too want to thank all of the staff that we had here. So congratulations to the Treasuring, the Treasurer staff. Phenomenal work. We've said this for like the last eight meetings, but love that they were here to be able to be recognized publicly. So thank you for all the logistics for that. To the special services staff, thank you for the work that you do. It is sometimes easy to look at the numbers, but the impact that you have, and that was shown tonight, really, really appreciate all the work that you do to make that special for our, for our students. So thank you. I also want to thank, you know, we talk about all the great things that are going on, but there are so many of our administration and teachers who are working to provide outstanding graduation experiences. I know Locota East just had prom on Saturday. I got the connect, the ability to connect with the principal from Locota West, Ben Brown, and he talked about how flawless Locota West's prom went off two weeks, or I guess a week ago. There's so much work that goes into that. So again, I think it's reflective of our district, how much the staff, and the teachers, and the administration care about making every opportunity for our students outstanding. And so I want to take a moment to thank that. Obviously, thank, or welcome once again to Dr. Whitley. I want to say, we are thrilled to have you here. You are exactly what we were looking for in this process. And I also want to talk a little bit about the process. I was thrilled with the process that we went through on this. So the ability to attract a firm like Finding Leaders to work with us as a board, the transparency that they gave us, the ability to bring us, to help us better articulate who we are looking for in a superintendent, and then bring us outstanding candidates against that. You know, I loved the semifinalists that we had, I loved our finalists that we had, and I am thrilled with the final result. And what I have commented to several community members on this is, it's a great situation where it's a very hard debate to land on the final choice, because there's no scorecard. The scorecard, everybody hit the scorecard. Finding Leaders brought us people who fit everything that we were looking for. And it, I'm really reassured that we found the person, and based our decision on the best fit, not just for now, but the future. So really, really, really happy to start this relationship with you, Dr. Whitley, and all of the great expertise that you're bringing to us. So welcome.
Okay. I want to start with thanking Andrea and your team for this presentation. I'm so glad to hear that we have special programs for our special need kids, and no kid is left behind. That was a great presentation. Thank you for that. I want to thank Adam and the Treasurer Office for fantastic job that you've been doing. And we are glad to have you as our superintendent. And 100%, you're going to have my support, any day, any night.
I'll be the Treasurer.
Piece of treasure, not superintendent.
You said superintendent.
You said superintendent.
Treasurer, I'm sorry.
Dr. Whitley said, wait a minute.
Dr. Whitley, I have in my mind, okay? While I was addressing the Treasurer, I was talking about you. So I apologize for that. Yeah. Thank you. Dr. Whitley, you're welcome. I know on Saturday you were not here, and I want to especially say some things today, and then find some closure, so that we can find a way to work together, because I'm going to support you. But I have some things that I wrote down, and I want to read it out for you. And also for those that might not know my reason for the decisions I made, I'm going to give a little bit, some details. But I want you to know that I'm going to work, I'm very, very excited that I'm going to work with you, and I'm going to support you. And I'm going to make sure that I'll do my best, whatever you need from me, for you to succeed, I'll be there for you. Okay. So this directly is to you and to the community. I want you to hear in my, my own words, the reason for my vote on Saturday. I would like to prefix that I will support you in your new role, Dr. Whitley. My reasons are, at the beginning of this process, I made it clear to my fellow board members that with 18,000 students, master facility plan, union contracts, and the need to improve our students' achievement numbers, there is no room for learning on the job. We have to have experienced superintendent. The issues in front of us are daunting, even for an experienced superintendent, much less someone without practical day-to-day experience in all of these different areas. Secondly, in my opinion, this process was flawed for lack of transparency. There were numbers of applicants that I did not get to see their resumes, and only five candidates were presented for interviews. Out of the two, out of the, which two had superintendent experiences, 12 years and seven years respectively. years respectively. For whatever reason, neither of them made the cut to the finals. How did that happen? That we did a national search, spent $17,000, and came out with two finalists that did not have superintendent experience? That is my question for the consultants. Thirdly, there are things I cannot talk about because they happen in executive session, sections. In general, information was not shared with me in a timely fashion. It was really strange when and how I got the information I needed. Fourthly, the entire process was held in executive sessions. I believe the public deserved to have been informed as the process proceeded, that there was a public interest in the board trying to make this more transparent. These are my fears. My fear for you as assistant superintendent, you had helped manage the following: five buildings, about 1,900 students, and about 123 or thereabout staff and teachers. At Lakota, you'll be fully responsible for managing the following: 23 buildings, if I add the office, it's going to be 24, 18,000 students, 2,000 staff and teachers. With these numbers in comparison, I believe you are not set for success. I hope to be proven wrong. And I will be watching and holding you accountable. With this being said, I believe that not all of my fellow board members' focus is on students' achievement. On this job, my focus has always been and will always be our students' success. Again, I will say here that I will support you as our superintendent, but was disappointed in the process. I demand that this statement be added to the minutes. Thank you.
Dr. Lally, would you like to speak next?
I don't have anything further. Just please come and help us celebrate all the events that you can be at with our students because that's why we're here, is to, is to make sure our students are the focus and we keep concentrating on them. So please come when you can.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Mr. Zink?
I think everybody probably has received in their mailboxes, the Financial Prospectus. Shout out to Betsy's team and the Communications Department for putting a wonderful thing together for us. It turned out better than expected. So thanks to the Communications Department for all you do. Also, it kind of shocked me when I heard there's two weeks of school left.
Oh.
Seems like just the other day, I was saying there's two weeks of football season left. And where has this year gone?
Goodness.
Yeah, the funds getting ready to begin in the Treasurer's Office. So that's all I have. I can't believe the year's almost over. Graduations next week.
Yay. Thank you. Mrs. Casper?
So when you're fourth, and I'm sorry for Julie, who's fifth, a lot of things have already been said, so I'm going to repeat them anyway. I do want to echo what Christina said to Andrea. Thank you for your presentation because the more that we know what goes on, the more we are able to support you in the community when we get the questions and when we get the rumors. So that way, when we know, when you're transparent with us, then we, we are able to support you in the community to know that we're doing excellent job for our special need kids. So thank you for that. Of course, Adam, congratulations again. How many times do we have to do this? Are we done?
Too many. We will do better planning next year, I promise.
I'm kidding, no. Thank you, and to your team. I'm glad they got to go home. But it is a, it is a, when you talk about how many people actually qualify and get it, it is a big honor. So thank you for that. This is my favorite time of the year, so I'm always very excited. I love all the events. I love, love, love graduation. So I'm excited about that. I also would like to welcome Dr. Whitley. It was a pleasure to work with our search firm and to get candidates that were so passionate about Lakota. Our two finalists were both very passionate about Lakota. And it was great to see so many community members engage in the process that Finding Leaders does a little bit different than we have done in the past. And I will say, I was concerned that maybe it wouldn't, wouldn't work. But the questions that the community members that were chosen to sit in that room came up with, it was very nice as a board to be able to sit back and listen and to the candidate answer questions and to see the enthusiasm from the, the community members. Once again, the most insightful 42 people sitting in the room were our students, who had some of the best questions. And they were some of the most engaged. So it was great to see that. I would like to say that when Mr. D says that there isn't a lot we can discuss, it's done in executive session. And I believe that's for the protection of any candidate who might be coming to us. But we had a discussion and the things that we told the search firm that we wanted, we did not want to limit it to a sitting superintendent. And we did all agree to that in January when we talked to the firm. But I just want to address that I don't believe any of the five of us sitting up here, that our number one priority isn't student achievement. I don't want to speak on behalf of my fellow board members, but that is my number one priority. You said it's your number one priority. I would assume, as I see shaking heads of Mr. Horton and Mrs. French, who've already spoken, that student achievement is their priority. So it is all of the board's priority. It's not just one person's priority. So I just wanted to make sure that we could clear that up. And it's a, it's a new era and I'm excited to be working alongside Dr. Whitley to do what's best for all of our students.
Is that it?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I'm afraid to congratulate Adam again because he might not fit out the door.
We're not going to get out the door.
You know, so I'll say, until next year. I look forward to congratulating you next year on the same achievement.
Only one time.
I really don't want next year. Don't drag that out.
So again, I was glad to see proms went well. So many events happening right now. We have concerts this week. We have graduation, which is always the highlight of our year because it's the culminating event. While I was here, I read my watch and my sunset, got a PR and placed second in GMC.
Wow.
Yay. So hard night to miss, but congratulations to all the kids who had an opportunity to run tonight and all the other events today. Also, educator of excellence, Bethany Dunn was awarded the educator of excellence for seven through 12 at West. Having had two kids who had her, I wholeheartedly agree with that selection. And as she stated, as my understanding, I wasn't able to be there, but Mrs. Casper shared with me that her conversation was all about how many of her fellow teachers were just as deserving. And I love that because I do feel like our staff is so supportive of one another and we're so grateful for that. Again, I have high hopes for the future of Lakota. I do believe also that we have picked the right leader. We had Joe Henson, our chamber president, tell me that it was the best process that he'd been involved with, and it was four or five processes. And when you look at the achievement results of the candidate we picked, where the school she comes from has the highest achievement results, and I am confident that she had a hand in getting there. And her breadth of knowledge and expertise, because she was from a smaller school district, was an absolute asset for us to be able to look at all components of our district and make sure that they will be the very best going, going forward. And I am confident that we will succeed and the future is bright for all of our Lakota students. So thank you for being willing to come and join our team and make Lakota the success that everyone hopes it can be and knows it will be. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?